Staff ready?
Yep.
We're not green yet, but when we are, we're hit the gavel. You made it, man. You're on time.
Get one home and tie. Put on another shirt and I'll tie.
I just went for the shot. All right.
Me too.
I want to call to order the city council workshop for November 12th, 2024. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Before we begin, I need the council to know, staff to know, press to know, that I'm the one that asked for this workshop. Based upon our council retreat, water was a big topic for us. And it's a big topic for our community. Half a week goes by that a citizen doesn't comment to me, what are we going to do about water? We have a long-range plan. And it outlines what the plan is. And it's a good plan. And I believe we're going to have a presentation on that tonight. However, what I hope we achieve by the end of this meeting is that we five understand what the options are going forward, how much they may cost, and if we're willing to do the next steps. I was in HEB today. And it's lucky that I don't know anybody. I can walk through HEB and I don't know anybody and they don't know who I am.
Right.
Lovely. But I thought all the people I'm seeing here today, and some of their kids, and some of their grandkids are going to depend on us to make decisions so we have water for our community in 100 years. We'll be gone. And Curville won't. And the need for water won't be gone. And so that's why I asked for this meeting. With that preamble, you ready, Mr. Barron?
Yes, sir. We're a...
Mr. Barron, singular, sorry.
We're a... This will be a three-phase approach to this, to the mayor's question of how's our water system looking and what do we need to do for the future? So what we'd like to... First of all, we're going to start with HDR. They did our original water plan. Oops, Martin, that's the second presentation there. Luckily, Mr. Zachary Stein's still working for HDR. He's actually put the plan together back in 2018 for us. And so he's offered to come up and give us a presentation. HDR's not charging us for it, so thank you for coming up. We really appreciate y'all's...
We all appreciate that. Thank you.
Really, really do. I mean, that's a big token of them saying, hey, we like y'all's plan and we support it and we understand it. And we're willing to stand behind it this many years later and come up and revisit. We're not really doing an update. We're doing a review of that plan.
And that's what I appreciate. The five of us need to understand that plan.
And then after that, we will talk a little bit about... I have Chris Clark and David Barrery. We're going to talk a little bit about what's going on right now, what we've done since the plan. So we'll bring you an update for that last five years. And then I'll stand up at the end and give y'all some more conservation measures that we've kind of dreamt up in the last year or so of things that we think we could do in the future that may even help with density issues and so on. So there's a few more options that y'all will see if we don't throw out enough options just in the plan itself.
The plan has five specific strategies. Will we be talking about those tonight?
Yes, sir. We're going to review the whole plan. Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
So without that, without any more to do, I will introduce Mr. Zachary Stein. He's actually signed the, sealed the plan, you and...
Cory Shaw.
Cory. Cory also worked on it with him. So he'll walk you through the review and then we'll give you the update towards the end.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your work on the plan.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your being willing to come and talk with us.
All right. It's my pleasure. As Stuart said, my name is Zach Stein. I'm a Water Resources Engineer with HDR. I've been there 18 years doing long-range water supply plans. I also have a pretty big background in water rights permitting, surface water modeling, so forth. So with that, let's jump into it. So 2018 is when we published the plan. Keep in mind that most of the analysis and data and crunching and meeting with stakeholders happened probably in 2017, late 2016. So, you know, as we walk through a lot of this data, keep in mind it's six, seven, eight years old. And so things have progressed, but we'll go over the plan. And then I know Stuart's going to give an update on, you know, what's come after that. So just a quick overview of what we'll be covering. Just a... I'll give a quick 101 on how we typically develop long-range water supply plans. Go over demand, supplies, and needs, which is really the first step in that process. Look at the different strategies that we evaluated. We'll go into some detail of those. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And then we'll cover the recommended plan. And then what we recommended back in 2018 is the next step. So looking at the process, first thing we really do is we estimate future water use demands. And we'll dive into a little bit deeper detail here in a few slides. But the next thing we do is we determine existing reliable drought supplies. So existing infrastructure in place, the city's existing sources. And we look at how reliable those sources are during a severe drought. And for this plan, we chose to say, how would those sources perform during a repeat of the drought record? And as bad as 2011 was, as bad as the last few years was, those are likely, and really, I'm pretty confident, those are not the worst drought on record. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. And really, when you compare those two, you calculate the water supply needs. And that's really the first goal of the plan. Number one is to say, how much existing supply do we have right now that's reliable? When do we need more, or is it enough to cover our demands right now if we had that severe drought? And if it is, then when do we need new supplies to limit that risk of having supply shortages? And so once we determine those needs, looking out into the future, we identify strategies. And so we went through a stakeholder process, and we'll dive into that a little bit more too later. And we identified, I think it was close to 10 strategies, eight, nine, 10 strategies. It was quite a few. And then we evaluate those strategies and ultimately select the ones that rise to the top, identify those that are really not feasible or really not worth the city's resources and effort to keep pursuing because they're just not feasible, maybe from an economic standpoint, maybe an implementation standpoint. And we'll talk about those. And then finally, we put all those recommended strategies together to develop a plan that meets those future demands out into the future. So with that, any questions just on the general process? Great. So diving into demands. So the way we went about this is we took historical water use data that the city provided. And we had that data by account type. And just prior to us beginning the long-range water supply plan, the city had completed its comprehensive plan, looking at how the city wanted to grow and develop out to 2050. And so to be consistent with that, we took those growth goals and applied them to basically the different types of user accounts that the city has. And we assumed that the number of those accounts would grow by either 1% or 1.5% depending on the type. In discussions with Stuart and the city, we also conservatively assumed that the city would add a couple of large reuse customers. And then also estimated that slippage, which is really just the water loss that happens in every system. You know, just as you have leaky pipes or reject water from the water treatment plant or whatever else. I mean, no system's 100% perfect. And, you know, there's just that loss that occurs. And so as you'll see, when we look out into the future demands, we look in like a 30- to 50-year timeframe, which is a typical kind of planning horizon for a plan. But at the time, the city, and I'm, I think, talking to Stuart, the city and others, you want to look further beyond that too. And Mayor, you mentioned as well as generations to come. And so we also projected those out 100 years. Now, granted, there's a lot of uncertainty with that, but to begin thinking generations ahead and developing projects to meet those demands. So when we went through those calculations, basically what we came up with was in 2020, there would be about a 4,800 acre-feet-per-year demand and increasing out to 6,500 out in 2050. What's great about coming back now is I can see, hey, just how good our demands were or our projections were. If you look at actual demands, which Stuart was kind of enough to provide for the last four years, you can see that they've kind of been tracking fairly close to what we projected and a little bit under, which is good because we always want to be a little bit conservative. So with that, you know, we can project that out to 2120. You can see that larger growth as, you know, 1% and 1.5% compounded annually, you know, 100 years out really drives that growth. I believe the plan assumed that for the city to grow this much, there would be quite a bit of annexation that would happen and the city would serve those annexed areas. Before we move on to existing supplies, any comments, questions on the methodology approach calculations for the projected demands?
Those actuals, the last four years, what are those you've got on your actuals? Those four black actuals, does that represent the last four years or what does that represent?
Yes, ma'am. That's the actual production over the last four years.
Okay.
And you can see from that, go back to that slide real quick.
Sure.
Feel free to ask questions all the way.
Yeah.
We're going to try to keep as informal as possible. If you want to go to the microphone. But you can see we're kind of in line with what we thought we were going to be, right? We're not... In 2023, we're a little bit higher, a super dry year. We've got a little bit more use of the amount of water that dissipated. But really consistent for those years as to what we were dissipated, so we're real satisfied with that.
So existing sources, and I'm assuming that the council's pretty familiar with the existing sources, but we'll touch on them real quick. Surface water, the city is able to divert stream flows from the Guadalupe River during times of plenty. And when there's excess capacity in those diversions, the city has the ability to store that water after they treat it in aquifer store, in the aquifer, tradiacufer, and then recover it during dry times or high-demand times to help with peaking. City also has groundwater in the tradiacufer, which is really the workhorse, in my opinion, of the city's supply system that really has the ability to produce the most water and really in the most reliable fashion. And then the city's also in the last, I guess, Stuart, when was the reuse pond built? 10 years ago, maybe?
2018.
Yeah.
This report came out just slightly before we did the reuse pond.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about this map while we're here?
Sure.
Do we serve customers outside the city limits?
Yes, sir.
Do they pay the same rates as the people within the city?
They pay one and a half times the rate.
Thank you.
But we don't serve all of those people on this map. This is our CCN map.
Okay. And CCN stands for?
Certificate of Need and Necessity.
Nothing on that line.
Convenience.
Convenience. Thank you.
Thank you for the interruption. Sorry.
And so because the city has really diversified its supply portfolio, which is really, to take a moment to talk about just how much of an anomaly that is for a city the size of Curville is, cities this size usually rely on one source, maybe two, or they have a regional water provider that handles their raw water supply. So really some great foresight by city, current and past city leaders to diversify this source. And we'll talk about why that's really important here in a minute. But it also allows the city to basically use those different sources to operate in a very efficient manner where the city can first utilize that groundwater because it's not always available and then store it for later times in the ASR and then really hold back on that groundwater to use as more of a backup source. And then with the addition of the reuse pond, they can really stage that reuse during winter months, right? And then during those high-demand summer months, they can use that water for irrigation and really cut back that demand on the treated water supply during summer. So digging into it a little bit. So this graph shows what, by source, what the city actually produced, basically leading up to the plan. Stuart provided me some information and I would have updated this figure, but I couldn't find the spreadsheet archives. So, but typical pattern was seen afterwards as well. And you can see that the city was really able to get most of its supplies from the river, even during 2011, which was a very, very dry year, and really reserve that groundwater supply. And so this is really important to talk about how this is different from how we evaluated the reliability of the existing supplies when we look at the system under severe drought conditions and real strict enforcement from TCQ. So because of that flexibility, they are able to really lean on that surface water a lot more than if it was their only supply source and really get the most out of it. So let's talk about surface water and Curville's existing supplies. So on the left, that table there shows Curville's four water rights that they use to basically divert water from the river and meet municipal needs. You'll notice that the authorized diversion amount or amount that they can pump out of the river, if you add up all four of those permits, and I can't point on a TV, but it's over 6,000 acre-feet a year. Now, if you remember the current demands, they were only around 4,000 acre-feet a year. So one could take this table that sums up all their water rights and say, hey, we have enough water rights to meet all of the demands. But what that person wouldn't understand is that, number one, just because there's water in the river doesn't mean Curville has the right to divert it. And number two, there's not always water in the river. As we're, I'm sure you're all aware from this past summer and the summer before and previous summers, right? And so in Texas, water rights are enforced by the doctrine of prior appropriations. And in layman's terms, that's first in time, first in right. And so that priority date there shown in the middle column is really key to determining who has the right to that water when it's there. And if you'll notice, that red line there signals that the GBA Canyon Reservoir Water Right is senior to all but one of Curville's water rights. And really what that means is, under strict enforcement of the prior appropriations, if Canyon Reservoir is not full and spilling, technically, Curville could have to pass all the water under those water rights. Now, does it happen like that? Does TCQ enforce it? They haven't. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But just to understand that risk that's out there from having those water rights that are junior to Canyon Reservoir.
May I interrupt with one more question, please?
Sure.
Mr. Barron, the water right that's dated 1914 is basically the little lake in Louise Hayes Park. Is that correct? We have no, we don't divert water from that lake. We don't actually, we might use it to, do we use it to irrigate the park?
So one time that water right was for irrigation and there was, I think there was an impoundment right there to go back to look at it. But after the city, they didn't irrigate that anymore. And so we said, well, we're going to move, we're going to change the diversion point and change the uses of that water right to be municipal. And so we relocated the diversion point to our surface water treatment plant.
So the water that's in the bank at that little lake, little pond, basically, we can actually divert upstream. Is that correct?
No, we don't have any rights to pull the water that's pooling there, but we diverted. So there's, as you... I feel bad sitting down talking to you, Mayor.
Remember, I'm a layman. I'm trying to understand.
So there's two sources on the river water. And Chris is going to talk a little bit more detail about this in a little while. On the state of Texas, surface water, there's two different types of water. There's run-of-the-river water and there's impounded surface water. The run-of-the-river water has a few different types within it, but that's actually the water that's flowing in the river. So we have the right to capture that. And then we have an impoundment right that says, okay, on Nimitz Lake, it's 824 acre... 824 acre-feet of water. We impound that and we have the right to pull that out of that reservoir every year. In Louise Hayes Park, we didn't move the, you can't move the impoundment right because it's behind a dam. It's stuck there. But you can move your run-of-the-river right. And that's what we relocated back up to the water treatment plant. So the water that's flowing in the river, instead of being able to divert it and irrigate with it at Louise Hayes Park, I think we just did an additional use. We allowed for it to be used at the water treatment plant and be used for municipal. If it's not...
Run of the river at Louise Hayes Park, but not the impounded water at Louise Hayes Park.
That's right. The impounded water has to stay there.
And do we use the impounded water under that river right, under that water right?
No, I don't think we have the right to divert that water.
So when we add it up in this 6,051 total authorization, are we using it?
No, sir. That's kind of the point of the slide is we have a lot more water on paper than what we actually use. So we have 6,051 acre-feet and there's about 4,000... I was doing the math while I was talking, but right about 4,000 acre-feet is what the city demands annually.
I think that's important for the council to know. Thank you.
And so along those lines, he'll talk more about groundwater. So you'll see a bunch of different sources of water, and Chris will talk more about it later. So I won't steal your thunder.
In 1914, that was a mill pond. And we didn't build that concrete dam until the 50s. But the water right continued for that old mill.
And that's why it's so old. It was a 1914 right. And it's one of the more senior rights, and that's why it was interesting or interesting. That's why we took interested at utilities because that water is more senior, therefore more reliable during times of drought.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
And so as we talked about the priority of those water rights, the way we evaluate that reliability is to simulate historical hydrology with those water rights in place and with the limitations that are in the permit, limitations as we just discussed, where you can divert from storage or where you cannot divert from storage. And for the plan, we developed a daily spreadsheet model that basically simulated all of those water rights. And what we found was that if you followed those water right terms and conditions to a T and TCQ would have the authority to enforce that to a T, there would be multiple years during the 1950s drought, which we still consider the droughter record, along with the more recent drought where none of those water rights would have been able to be utilized. Because, and not to get too far in the weeds, but that senior water right cannot divert stored water out of Nimitz Lake. It could only divert stream flows. And there's also a stipulation in that water right that Nimitz Lake has to be above a certain level. And so during the drought, that level would drop because it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to impound water in Nimitz Lake because it's junior to Canyon. And so that lake would be far enough down that other term. And so getting down in the water right weeds, long story short, the reliability would...
But the water right, the 1914 water right, the Louise Hayes Park water right, was reevaluated much later because Nimitz Lake didn't exist when that water right was assigned to Curville.
The 1914 was relocated. That was done just a few years ago, yes, sir. I say a few years. I'm getting a little older now. Maybe it's been here 10 years ago.
So Nimitz Lake is actually, the storage in Nimitz Lake, I believe, is actually authorized under permit 3505 with a 1977 priority date.
Thank you.
And so when we simulate those water rights under strict enforcement of prior appropriations, you see that there are many years where either there's no water in the river or that water is called upon or not, or Curville's not basically able to pump it. And so for the plan, we look at supplies on a very conservative basis. And so we ultimately decided that surface water is not a reliable drought source. So in the plan, we assume that surface water has a zero firm yield or zero supply.
That's a very important point.
It is.
Because what he's saying right there is that we're just assuming there's no water in the river currently.
Correct. Even though during this last drought, we've been able to...
Yes, sir. And that's why I wanted to distinguish that point is that as we look at this, you're going to see that we're in a pretty significant deficiency on our water supply. Now, that's not to say that this drought doesn't continue in the water and the river goes completely dry for a long period of time. That's the scenario that he's going to work through.
Thank you.
And so moving on to the next supply source, which is really tied to the surface water, but aquifer storage and recovery. And as we mentioned before, this allows the city to store treated surface water during wet periods for use during dry periods or high-demand periods. And operations, you know, we modeled this and we considered the operation limitations based on what the max injection and recovery rates were. And that third bullet there is really important because it's a one-to-one injection to recovery. So Curville was one of the first or the first to do ASR in Texas?
Texas, yes, sir.
Yes. And at that time, TCQ was still kind of developing the rules for ASR. And Curville really got a great permit and a great deal because basically they have this bank that for every drop of water that Curville injects, they can take out. If you were to go get an ASR permit now, the TCQ does modeling work and they determined based on modeling and other efforts that you're going to lose so much of that water to drift. And so oftentimes, you'll see the permits come out with a 5% to 10% annual loss of that water. And so if you put that water in and you, say you put in 100 gallons this year, TCQ is going to say 10 of those gallons is gone by next year. And you either got to keep putting water in to replace that or you just assume it's lost. And so really, it was great that Curville could get that before those rules changed. And now their permit has it. It's in perpetuity. And so they have that flexibility and they don't lose that water in case they go years without being able to put water in the ASR. And it has unlimited storage. That's, I think that's something that's changed too, where they assume the bubble can only get so big before you can recapture it. So once again, really great foresight by the city to move forward with that project when it was basically, yeah, the first of its kind in Texas, so.
We're still the only one that does surface water in the ASR. All the other ASR systems are either moving groundwater or wastewater or something else. As far as I know, we're still the only one doing surface water in the ASR.
Who was that when we do the, was that in the 80s?
Yes.
Joe was in there.
It was actually 1992.
Okay. Good to have a historian on the dais here.
Well, I was actually here.
You're there.
I guess the plant was built in the 80s, right? You, you are...
Bernie Broodens came up with the plan for ASR in early 90s.
And so the way we determine the firm yield or reliable supply of ASR is based on the current volume that's stored in there. So if you go back to this slide, we can see that during the model simulation, there's 10.4 years that under kind of worst case, and I don't want to say worst case, but very strict enforcement, 1950s drought happens again, 10.4 years where no water would be able to be injected in ASR and you'd be taking that water out every year. And so the way we determine that firm yield is the current storage divided by 10.4 years gets you that volume of water you could take out every year and make it through the droughter record. And so if you look at current storage, the chart there ends in 2018, right before we published the plan. And current storage is still about that same level. So it sounds like y'all have been able to kind of balance that over the last six, seven years.
We updated that number. So that is today's number, that 908 million gallons, 908 million gallons, what we have currently in ASR.
The chart's not updated, but just that one number.
Just that number.
Thank you.
And the chart shows, if you look at those blue and orange bars, how the city operated, how the city operated the ASR between 2001 and 2018 with blue bars is the amount of water they were injecting. between twenty-two thousand one and twenty eighteen with, blue bars is the amount of water they are injecting. Orange bars are, are during air recover. So you can see in twenty eleven, when things got really bad and dry, the city was recovering water to help meet those, those high demands. And then as things got wetter in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they were able to really utilize a lot of that excess stream flow and, and build that storage up. So any questions, ASR, before moving on to?
We have a chart in the, in the plan that suggests, uh, that the groundwater level response to ASR operations is consistent, meaning that it essentially all cumulative storage in ASR can be reliably recovered. And, uh, there are critics of our system that think it can't be. And the current rules say that you're gonna have some loss every year. Based on this chart, it looks like we put it in, we can still get it back out. Is that correct?
Yeah, so as, as we talked about a little bit earlier, the new ASR rules are, don't apply to us. Every gallon that we've put in, we have the right to pull back out. The state doesn't say it ever goes away for perpetuity. We, we own that water.
But I'm seeing a chart that suggests that you can recover it, actually.
So that, that's another question. That's paper water. Now how, how are we gonna be able to recover it or not? That water does get outside of our reach. So if we put a hundred gallons in here today, in three years, we may be only retrieve fifty gallons of that. But it's being replaced by native groundwater. And so we're, you know, it's built, basically it's building up the aquifer across the whole. And so though we may not get that molecule of water, so far it's proven out that even though we're not retrieving the same molecules of water, that water is still in the aquifer. It's not getting used by somebody else. At, at least not, not yet. Uh, and so we think that we're gonna be able to.
Those molecules are fungible. In other words, they, you can't tell molecules Smith or molecule Jones. They all, Curville molecules.
Yes, sir. There, there are some things that you can look at and see what, what, you know, is this the same type of water? But we know that the groundwater moves about ten feet a year is what's, what common knowledge is in our, in our aquifer. And so as our, our, obviously our ASR water's gonna, you can see how long we've had it in there. Some of that's gonna get outside of our reach.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So moving on to groundwater, uh, city currently has a permit to pump a little over thirty-six hundred acre feet a year from the Trinity Aquifer. As you can see from the, from that chart, the city has not come close to pumping that full amount. And that's because benefits of the system and system operations where they can really overdraft surface water when it's there and hold back on that groundwater and really preserve that source for those, that future drought when it comes along to really lean a little bit more, lean a lot more probably on the groundwater.
I wish there were other governmental entities who would see this chart and understand it.
You know, Curville has the deepest wells in the area and basically a, a really high reliability during drought. There's a figure at the very end that shows we, as part of the plan, we did not do groundwater modeling to simulate that. Um, that was beyond our scope of work and typically beyond the scope of a planning level study. But what we did was we looked at historical aquifer levels and during that time there when twenty eleven, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, fourteen, when the city did rely quite a bit more heavily on the wells, you can see the water levels really plateau out, even though the city was really pumping pretty hard from the aquifer, which shows that it's a, it's a very reliable source that, you know, it, it, it was really resilient through that drought period. And so that's where we made the conclusion that the city's full permit is likely reliable during severe drought conditions. Um, and finally reuse. So the city, uh, has one point five million, at the time, we estimated the city has one point five MGD or a little over sixteen hundred acre feet a year, reliable, treated effluent during drought conditions. So um, kind of your, your dry effluent base flow, if you will. Um, and they had recently, or I think, I think y'all had just recently constructed the, the pond when we did the plan. Um, ninety million gallons storage pond. And treated effluents projected to increase with future increase in demands and water use. So you see that line really driving up over a hundred years and that's really dependent on population growth. If that growth doesn't happen, that gray, that gray wedge there is, is much lower. So just keep that in mind that as population grows, you're gonna have more of this supply. But if the population stays where it's at or sees very little growth in that, that additional reuse supply there, that gray wedge is, is not gonna look like that.
But the demand will go down too.
The ma-, the man would stay the same, right?
Well, but the man, at least the man wouldn't be growing and this wouldn't be growing.
Right.
So you're protected, you know?
Yep.
I, I'm particularly interested in knowing, and probably four slides ago, I should have asked this question, but I know annexation is another way we could increase our demand, but when we have two or three major developments pending, that's my concern is will we be able to handle that additional water um, supply with Whiskey Springs or, um, Tybee Commons and those developments that we already have annexed? They're already in the city. So that's my, that's the question I want answered. It may come as we're talking cause I'm beginning to feel comfortable that we have a pretty good cushion, but when drought enters into the picture, it can change. So I'm just wanting to feel good about those future developments that are coming.
So we have those developments, but as a percentage of the growth in the community, it's not that big. It seems like, oh, that's quite a bit. If you put it out against the population and the activity we have today, it's not like we're growing fifty percent or something.
No, no.
And so we've got one percent or one, one, one and a half percent growth in here and it, and if you got, you know, so far we're, our population's not growing. The last three years, maybe it was two percent or something, one, three, four years. So it's not, even though we've had a lot of homes built and everybody says, oh, we're growing, we're growing. But the percentage is really, it's not that steep.
That's right. Yeah, we, so we're not growing as, we looked at that as a historical trend, kind of where we started this, was trying to figure out how fast is the city growing? What do we need to plan for? That was, that was objective number one, because that's what you need before you can plan out how much water to need. And so what we did is, and that was all part of that twenty fifty plan that the city put together. And in there, we, we decided that we, we looked at historical trends and figured that the city grows about one, closer to one percent to be honest with you. But I think we settled on one point five percent as the next, as that planning horizon. And so we just extrapolated, since this was even a longer plan, we said, well, let's just extrapolate that out over a hundred years.
So you think it's about?
About one point five.
Yeah, yes. Different, there are different categories that have a little different, almost, almost exactly one point five across the board. Um, but as those developments come, you're gonna see, you're gonna see spikes. You're not gonna see an even growth. So when you're um, Blue Ridge or, or Whiskey Springs, when you're gonna see a, a jump that year, but we're thinking as it, as it's gonna kind of level out over the years or.
Okay. That's encouraging.
Uh, one more point I'll make about reuse is it's gonna be your most reliable source. During the driest times, people are gonna flush their toilets and take showers and you're gonna have effluent and reuse coming out, so.
And I did not say him to say that.
That was quite a feat, getting that pond approved, paid for. I mean, you know, we're still, it, it's, it was quite a feat. So glad it's paying off.
That was, you were there.
Mm-hmm, I was there.
And as part of the plan, discussions with Stuart and, and other staff at the time, we made the decision that half an MGD would be reserved for future potable or non-potable use. So um, that way the city kind of kept that in reserve in case it, it did wanna use that point five MGD for potable or non-potable strategies.
Ironic because the council member before that was sitting in this free seat was, uh, was not, uh, an agreement with it. So it was interesting how time does take care of things.
May see him later.
So when we add up those reliable sources and, and this is where I really wanna point out how much different this looks versus what's been actually produced over the last ten years. You can see during severe drought conditions, repeated the droughter record, the city's supply portfolio would look something probably more closer to this with a much larger amount coming from groundwater, much less amount coming from surface water and ASR. And then the non-potable reuse supply really staying about the same because it's that real consistent source. So um, you know, when, when you see that disconnect from what's actually being produced versus what's in the plan, that's the reason why. Because we're assuming worst-case drought conditions, when supplies from the river really aren't gonna be available. You're really just relying on ASR that you're trying to string out as long as you can because you don't know how long the drought is and then leaning real heavy on that groundwater. And so when we take those projected demands and compare them to the existing reliable drought supply, we came up with a little over seventeen hundred acre feet per year deficit out in twenty fifty with that growing to over nine thousand acre feet out in twenty-one, twenty. And, and of course, I'll, I'll put the caveat, very high level uncertainty in twenty-one, twenty, um, even in twenty fifty. I mean, a lot can change, right? But, um, but it takes years, decades to get a new strategy online oftentimes. So you need to project it out that far. So before we dive into the different strategies, it's probably a good point to just talk, any questions, discussions on existing supplies, methodology, calculations, anything in the plan that raises questions?
I just had a question about the agricultural well that's on the Shiner Golf Course. You go back a few slides, there's a agricultural well. Can you explain that to me?
It's actually the, that's actually-
This right here.
That was the one, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, the golf course irrigation well.
Yes. They're a welder and they used to use it, um, for irrigation of the golf course. Um, we, once that well, actually all the water that's pumped out of that well, since it's owned by the city now, that was drilled before the city owned it?
Um, is put, is built against our potable water supply. And so when we started supplying the golf course reuse water, they quit using that well.
Okay.
To, to the majority of the degree. I think they still use it a little bit on some greens. I'd, I'd heard recently that they were working on it to kind of try to get the, they needed some little fresher water for the greens. The reuse water has more salt in it, it's a little harder on some of their, on some of their vegetation. Um, so some of the places still wanna use good water for, for their greens. But yes, there is a functional well at the golf course. That well's owned by the city and it's built against our groundwater supply.
Do we use it?
Does we, do we pump water out beyond the greens?
No, it's, it's just for the golf, but they, they use just a little bit.
Oh, you're on that slide. The red circles, the public supply wells.
Yes, ma'am.
What, how much do they hold and what do we use them for? What do we use that water for?
Those are our drinking water wells. They're, they're, um, when you say how much do they hold, it's how much can they pump? Um, and so it, it depends on each one of them. That's all about the formation, how deep the well is. Are they all the way down to the bottom of the aquifer? How big of a pump does it have in it? Uh, they're, they're anywhere from like that Alpine well on the top, I think it pumps around thirty or forty gallons a minute. And you look at, uh, we, our Metaview, they pump, you know, four hundred gallons of it.
No, more than that, seven, seven hundred gallons a minute. So it, it's a big range. It just kind of depends on how lucky you are when you, when you drill and how you finish it.
The chart, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, I'm done.
The chart that shows the deficit, not only for twenty fifty, but twenty twenty-one or whatever. Twenty-one, twenty. Uh, that's only relying on firm supplies. And you didn't count uh, the river as a firm supply, did you?
That's correct. We assume that it's not firm.
Because of the various water rights downstream.
And, and we assume that that's the supply during severe drought conditions.
And so what we have experienced in this most recent drought, we're still getting water out of the river when the river has adequate flow, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so that, that, that deficit in our experience has not been this great a deficit. Especially in the short term, the twenty fifty one, uh, because we, we've been actually, uh, been able to use water out of the river. It's just not counted in our firm supply.
That's right. If you look, if you would make this chart with, with actual water, like water, what I call water on paper, um, so the groundwater would be about four thousand acre feet and there would be about six thousand acre feet of surface water. That gets you up to ten thousand or, or ten thousand acre feet a year. And then in ASR, they ask, I remember developing this plan, they were like, how fast do you wanna use your ASR water? And I'm like, I don't know, how long is the drought gonna last? So we just took a slice and just said, we think whatever's in ASR, we want it to last five years. And so we just, I don't remember if it's five or ten, we just came up with an arbitrary number. So that's how long it's gonna last. And we plugged them in. So just using those numbers, you can see we're up at ten, twelve thousand, um, acre feet a year worth of water. But this is saying firm. This is saying that we think that during a worst-case scenario, this is the kind of water that we're gonna see, we're gonna have.
So the, the various tables here that show a deficit that grows every year, twenty twenty, we have a deficit of thirty-three acre feet per year and it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. That's based on firm supply.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Could the, um, a couple charts back, the non-potable reuse supply expands, but not on that, that last chart that you were just on. So we got this, because we're growing, we have more u- reuse supply, but it's not showing in the other chart.
Right. And that's because the city doesn't have a way to use that additional supply right now. They don't have the infrastructure in place to treat, either treat that water to potable standards or-
We don't have the capacity to treat it.
Or they don't have a treated water customer that's willing to take non-treated water.
Mm-hmm.
So in order for this to show up on our available water in the worst ca-, in that worst-case scenario, it's, that would have to be treated to another, another standard, a drinking water standard. Right now, it's just reuse water.
But that's possible.
That is possible. It's, it's, it's a bit pricey, but as you'll see on the next part of his presentation, um, most of the, most of the things out there that were, were reliable water are pricey. So we'll keep moving. We gotta, I gotta keep them on, on task for whenever we get done with the other part. But y'all feel free to ask.
I'm sorry, I keep interrupting.
Okay. Yeah, I wanna be consideration to give others their, their presentation time here. So looking at different strategies, um, so the, the way we went about identified strategies were, number one, based on our experience of doing long-range plans, um, and types of strategies, talking with the city and their ideas uh, for strategies. And then we also were, were very transparent and reached out to local stakeholders. Those being, uh, Upper Gualipe River Authority, Kerr County. So we met with commissioners from Kerr County at the time. And we also met with headwaters to talk about their ideas or thoughts on further production from the, from the aquifer. And, and basically we compiled all those into this list here of twelve strategies really. And so we'll walk through each one. Um, I know we're, we're getting short on time, so I'll hit the highlights and, and definitely, uh, stop me if you, if you got questions. So the way we went about evaluating those were based on six criteria, um, everything from reliable drought supply. So once again, just like existing supplies, we look at strategies on what they can produce when you really need it during that severe drought, not, not in good times. Um, we looked at total project costs, um, unit cost, which is basically the, the amount of supply if you and that, when you compare the amount of supply and the total project cost when you annuitize it, basically. So it gets you a, basically a cost per acre foot, um, the permitting effort and implementa-, implementation effort. So we'll dive into those. Uh, Mayor, I heard you say at the beginning, you know, if we're willing to take on the costs, I will give a big caveat to cost presenting in this.
It's, it's before the pandemic. It's before supply chain.
It's, it's before the pandemic. It's before our Congress started spending money like drunken sailors. It's before tariffs on steel and it's before worker shortages. So these costs are not even in the ballpark of what current costs will be. So please don't, please don't come to me and say, Zach, in your plan, you said-
We're buying an ambulance tonight. I understand.
Okay. I wanna make that clear. Okay. Um, because yeah, number one, it's planning level. So we don't, we don't have a design. We don't have quantities of everything. And so there's a wide range here to begin with.
I understand.
And with all those other factors, um, think more comparison between the, between- Think more comparison between the, between the strategies versus actual dollar amounts. First one was additional conservation. As you can see in that chart, the city's done a great job of lowering that, that annual reduction or that annual use amount by connection is the way we looked at it. You can see that up until two thousand seven, three point one average annual reduction. And then after two thousand eight, when we started seeing some dry years, and we typically see this with cities. That rate of reduction kind of slows down a little bit. And what happens is all the people that have basically taken out their grass or installed low flow fixtures and, you know, you, you, you get to what we call demand hardening. Where people are just going to conserve so much, they're probably not going to take a shower in a bucket and then water their lawn with the shower, right? And so you, you see that, and when you see that, that's a, that's a good sign because that means you're doing a good job of conserving water. There's always room for further conservation, but just know it, it gets harder. And so we assume that in the, in the plan that there'd be a continued one percent reduction through twenty twenty three. And then after that, you kind of hit that point where you may see some reduction, but it would, it wouldn't be substantial now. I don't, I haven't seen the data recently, there may be more areas or parts where you can do that, further reduce it, but that's what we assume for the plan.
So I'm going to ask Zach, we'll talk a little bit more when we, when staff stands up, we'll talk about the first five projects. So I'm asking him to kind of skim through those, but we'll talk, we got some solutions for those. But I do want y'all to see some of the big, the big, really kind of off the wall things that came out of the plan and how much those costs are. So if we can get, we'll go through the, probably up to number six, I think we're starting talking about, but you, you just kind of touch on them quickly.
So yeah, basically, conservation is typically a low cost compared to other strategies. Permitting efforts low, but implementation effort, when you get to this point, becomes harder and harder, so that's why we assumed it was a medium. Local Ellenberger well, I know Stuart's probably going to talk about that. But basically, compared to other strategies, low cost, low permitting effort and then implementation effort we had as a medium. And the reason for that was because at the time, I know when talking to the city, when they had really produced a lot from their wells. They had some of the surrounding water supply cores that were calling them, saying, hey, our wells are struggling a little bit. And then as soon as the city would let off that demand, that their wells would come back. And so we assumed there would be some pushback from, from some of those outside water supply cores. Remote well field, same idea, but now moving out a little bit away from the city. As you can see, costs get a little bit, get a little bit higher. And then permitting effort gets a little bit more challenging now because you have to go buy leases from others, acquire property, do a pipeline, an environmental permitting along with that. So just, you can see it gets a little bit more difficult. Water rights, I know we talked about this, but a little bit, but we did a search of other water rights in the area that were basically senior to canyon reservoir. And so would be senior that pri, in that priority ranking and allow the city to continue diverting even though canyon reservoir wasn't full. And so we identified those, costs are tough to, tough to handle on that one because it's kind of on a case by case negotiation basis. Permitting, depending on the water right, moving that water right, diversion location, storage or depending, you know, it's a case by case basis. And getting that through T C Q can be challenging sometimes, so. This was kind of what we touched on earlier with amending nineteen ninety C A, nineteen ninety six to move that storage upstream. So you can move storage upstream, but it is challenging. And that's why it's permitting and implementation are high. You're definitely going to get some people protesting that amendment i- if the city were to move forward with it. But it would, it would help firm up those diversions up by the water treatment plant. ASR expansion, we looked at this and really quick summary of it is. The city, based on the city's current treatment capacity, adding another well didn't really make sense unless you expanded the water treatment plant as well. And then other things that consider, to take consideration in that is as you need more water from the river. You got to rely on more junior and junior permits, which are less reliable. Also, as the city's current demands are projected to grow, you're going to use more of that available surface water to meet demands that day. And not have as much excess water to put in the ground. And so it really, without, without really expanding the treatment plant, adding another well didn't really make sense unless it was for some operational flexibility. Depending on an area that maybe was new or needed to be served or something like that. So that's why it ended up being an alternative in the plan instead of a recommended strategy. Potable reuse, so as I mentioned before. Potable reuse is, is the most reliable supply out there. As you can see, it's not the cheapest supply by any means, but it will be there through you thick and thin through the drought. Permitting effort, some challenges with reuse supply is you're probably going to have to do some kind of R O membrane technology. You're going to have some reject water that you're going to have to deal with. So, and that causes a lot of challenges with what are you going to do with that reject water? Many times you can't put it back into the stream, depending on T C Q requirements, you may have to do a deep well to inject it or other ways to get rid of it. So it, it becomes challenging. And then implementation is effort is high just because many folks don't want to drink, treat it effluent. Looking at groundwater further away, same idea in general as the local and Kerr County wellfields. But now you're moving out of the county and that presents some new challenges. Mainly being, number one, you got to acquire the land leases in that area. You'll have to get a permit with the, I believe it's the Hill Country Underground Water Conservation District. And with that permit, not only do you have to get a permit to produce the water, but you also got to get a permit to export it. And so that's why you see the permitting efforts high, along with implementation effort is high because we'd, we'd assume that the people in Gillespie County. Would probably not like Kerrville taking all their water. Canyon reservoir upstream contract, so this is, this is an interesting one. And I'll give a brief background on it and why it looks good when you first look at it, but then as you dig into the details, it's definitely got some struggles. So in nineteen ninety nine, there was a memo of understanding between G B R A and Kerr County. And this memo of understanding came about when G B R A was amending its canyon water right to divert more water. So their original water right allowed them to divert fifty thousand acre feet a year. They amended that to now be able to divert and use ninety thousand acre feet a year on average over a five year period. The Kerr County, the commissioners protested the permit and as part of the settlement, they came up with this memorandum of understanding. That in the future. Kerr County could apply for a permit for up to six thousand acre feet a year with no storage and G B R A would not protest that permit. And part of that understand, memo of understanding was that it would be, or canyon would be subordinated to Kerr County. So they, G B R A would not call T C Q Water Master and say, canyon's not full, you can't use this permit. However, the, in, in the details, the devil's in the details. Is number one, no other water rights in the basin are subordinated to this new water right, which would be the most junior in the basin. So other senior water rights outside of G B R A and other G B R A water rights would be senior to this water right and would be able to call this water. Also, can't, G B R A would likely view this as an upstream contract. And so Kerrville would have to pay G B R A for basically firm water or water upstream based on their raw rate. And so there, there's some definite hooks in it. And then on top of that, a new permit is going to have environmental flow criteria, likely at center point, which would definitely knock down the reliability of that supply. We modeled it under those terms and conditions. And basically, we saw that there's quite a few years that that water would not be available basically during times of severe drought. So permitting effort's high to go get a new permit right now. G B R A may not protest it, but there would be others in the basin that would. And T C Q may still not even approve it because they may say there's no available water left in the basin to permit. Implementation's effort high, just going through the whole effort of agreements with G B R A. And final note, the memo of understanding is non-binding, so it's not a contract, it's just a kind of handshake agreement, if you will, that G B R A would do this.
Occasionally, you'll hear the county wave this around that they've got six thousand acre feet from G B R A. And that's, that, they were the ones that put it in the plan for us to evaluate. And it, it doesn't say that G B R A will, will give it to us, it just says they won't protest it, which is, that's a far cry from, hey, you've got reliable water. And, you know, come, come help us, you know, come get it. But when you, when you hear the six thousand acre feet being waved around, it's not, it's, it's not.
I'm sorry.
Zach, will you go back two slides since you were right there, please? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. This one?
No, sir, uh, the C A permitted map.
Oh yeah, the extra.
Right there. So every one of those is such Canyon Lake?
So every one of those is the location of a water right that has authorized, is, is the location of a diversion point authorized by a water right? And then the number of that water right is on those labels by those triangles. And those are all senior to canyon.
Okay.
So in theory, if the city bought one of those water rights, acquired it from whoever owns it. And then they would have to go amend that water right to move the diversion point down to the water treatment plant.
Thank you.
So brackish groundwater, this is another one we looked at. You'll see that it requires very deep wells, transmission pipeline, pump station, cooling tower, and then a D S A W plant. So R O facility likely, and you get into that same challenge of what do you do with this brine reject now that you got on your hands? You can't, you, you won't be able to divert, I mean discharge that into the stream, I can tell you right now, just the quality of the Guadalupe River, T C Q would never let you do that. So you got to drill another deep well to basically put that brine back into the, back below your brine aquifer pretty much. And you can see by the red highlights there, very expensive, but, but an option for water. If I remember correctly, I think they also maybe found like radioactive. A lot of times that water that's been in brackish aquifer has been down there for such a long time that it becomes even radioactive. I mean, it's got challenges with it. I think this is the last one we looked at, but looking at a regional wholesale water provider. Basically, the map shows the distance from the large water suppliers in, in the area. And so just that distance alone, along with the relatively small amount of water that would be needed by Kerrville. Really drives up that unit cost and the total cost is very high too. And the, the real biggest challenge is, is it's very unlikely any of these suppliers have additional water to even sell right now. I know L C R A is not selling more, I know canyon's fully contracted out, the firm yield of canyon's fully contracted out. Saws to the best of my knowledge is not selling water to entities outside San Antonio. So. Definitely not a recommended strategy to, to rely on somebody else to provide Kerrville that, that water. Oh, sorry, one more, off channel storage, so we looked at basically increasing storage, you know. ASR is really a storage, Nimitz Lake is a storage bucket. What if, what if Nimitz Lake was in a sense expanded? And you created this additional storage that during high flow times, you could pump that water up to this storage, this lake. And then during low flow times or drought times, you would release the water out of the lake and let it basically flow back down into Nimitz Lake and pick it up at the water treatment plant. It would require a new water right and an upstream contract with G B R A because G B R A would protest it. And then required infrastructure, dam, intake, pump station, pipeline. Not to mention that that water that you store in there is going to have very high evaporative losses, and so you're going to lose a lot of it. You can see the costs of doing that permitting effort to get a four or four permit with the core, along with the water right permit, extremely difficult. And then implementation effort is just getting all of that done i- is very challenging, so. Yeah, one more, so gravel pits, so this was, this was an idea that came about talking to U G R A. As they have a water right that they do not utilize, at least they did not when we did the plan. And so they were looking for a way to utilize that and firm it up because it's a junior water right, it's not firm. And using gravel pits, basically, we, we assumed this, this was a fatal flaw. Strategy for, for several reasons, number one, it's very likely, almost certain that those gravel pits are connected to the river through under, underground flow. And so it's very unlikely T C Q would let you do that because you may be pumping some water over there, but you're really just siphoning, if you will, water off the river. Which is not authorized. There's also no, there's also no infrastructure there to do this, so you'd have to build the intake pipelines to the off channel, pipelines to, up to the city. You'd lose a lot of that water through the gravel pits too, when the lake, when the water was down, when the river was down. And all in all, those gravel pits just aren't that big enough to store that much water to really get you that far during drought conditions. And so when the, when the river's really far down during the drought, when you really need that water, whatever little water is in there. It's probably going to seep back into the river and be lost downstream, so. We, we didn't really consider this a feasible strategy. And so when you, when you compare all of those together, we, we color coded it to do a heat map, you can see. Red, red really shows up in some of those. I want to say out of the box thinking strategies are ones that definitely, definitely more challenging. And, and the ranking confirmed that the local Ellenberger well was. Was the primary strategy for the city to continue pursuing. Now, when we look at the plan, we, we came up with two plans really. And it was to implement the Ellenberger well. And at the time, you know, there was some uncertainty as to whether how much it would produce. And so we said, well, if it doesn't produce, then basically you need to move up this remote well field. Out there from basically, what we come up with, what we, what we, what we put together the plan, it was if the Ellenberger well produces. That gives you enough time, it gives you twenty plus years before you really need to bring on that next big project, which would be a remote well field. If it doesn't produce, then that really moves up quickly and the city needs to really start pursuing that remote well field at a faster pace. And just quick summary of recommended steps, continue implementing conservation strategies and update the water conservation plan in twenty twenty three. Complete the local Ellenberger well, meet with T C, T C Q to discuss potential water right amendments. Contact identified water right holders to determine potential for acquisition. And really for that next step, for that next big project was start thinking about a feasibility study, looking a little bit closer at that groundwater, remote groundwater well. Maybe doing some investigation, maybe some groundwater modeling to see what kind of yields it would produce. Maybe start talking to some landowners to gauge interest on leases. Maybe start talking to some landowners to gauge interest on leases and so forth like that. And then finally, monitor supply and demand trends, which, which we somewhat did today to make sure there was no spikes in demands or something, or rapid growth that wasn't foreseen. And then basically update the plan every five to ten years as costs change, as supplies and demands change, as maybe there's a new drought record that happens. A big thing that we take into consideration now is climate change. And how is that, how is that play into the entities' risk portfolio of, to their existing supplies, basically, so. With that, that's, that's what I had, so I know I'm, I'm running long here.
We interrupted you, thank you, Mr. Stein.
Sure.
We are indebted to you, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
So thank you very much for the presentation, just to reiterate a little bit. Those were all the scenarios that anybody could come up with around the county. U G R A, the county, the city, all of, we, we piled them all into one. And that, that's kind of what came out of the top, the, the top four or five. So I think David's up next, he's gonna talk to you a little bit about what we've done. We're gonna try to, try to get you enough time to go upstairs for a few minutes, but we're probably gonna, we're gonna take a little bit more of your time, if you will.
Talk about what we've done, and then Chris will stand up and tell you a little bit more about the regulatory, uh, issues that we've seen, so.
Perfect.
David, if you will.
Okay. Try and scoot over that way carefully.
It doesn't scoot a room.
Oh, my goodness.
It's gonna be a challenge here.
We will make him stand longer. This is part of the technique, you know, you can't stand too long, so.
I'm, I'm being punished. So we'll quickly just go over a snapshot on, on some updates and progress on this long-range water plant. Some of these strategies, you know, Zachary was talking about them earlier, so this kind of shows what we've done and shows we are making some progress, so. Uh, one of the strategies, one was additional conservation. Not only additional, but continued conservation. We do that through educational information, you'll see that picture right there. That's, uh, stuff like that and other items are available here at utility billing. Just Water and Smart, we'll, we'll, uh, give stuff on, on irrigation, how do you conserve water inside and outside? Things like that. We do have a leak detection, uh, program. We have two ways of doing that right now, one of them is through some of the meters that billing is able to identify leaks and notify the customers right away. That helps minimize that water loss. The other detection method is having a third party come out and do some acoustic testing on our lines to see if they recognize anything. That was done a couple of years back. Nothing major wa- was found, so we were, we were looking pretty good on that. And we'll continue to look for other methods to, um, there's a lot of innovation out there to help detect leaks on our system, so we'll continue to look into that. Water conservation plan, we just mentioned on that, we just updated that this past year. So that's, that's a pretty extensive, uh, plan, so we'll submit it that to the Texas Water Development Board and hopefully implement some strategies and continue some also that are successful. Ordinance revisions, you'll see that come up, is that next month, Stuart, where we're gonna?
I hope so.
Bring up one-ten? Hopefully revise it, we'll have, um, some items that we may need to, to update, different stages, look at all that, look at some, uh, guidance documents as they pertain to headwaters. So you'll see that coming up next month. Uh, guidelines towards, uh, zero scape, so that's another initiative that can help, you know, with, uh, putting the right stuff out there for either existing development or even new development coming in. Rebate program, we've done a, recently, we had a toilet rebate, so, uh, low-flow toilet. You know, we replaced a lot of the high-flow toilets, I think we had two hundred and twenty-five toilets that were, were placed out of thirty-two applicants, so that was a successful program. And the last bullet point here is the press releases. So we have a list of press releases that we'll send out with information throughout the year. We'll have one next month on, uh, winterizing your irrigation system. And then we'll have another one that pertains to irrigation in the spring on how to properly check your system to make sure you're not overspraying or whatnot. So moving on to strategy two, uh, local Ellenberger well, that was partnership with, uh, Headwaters. That was completed and put into production in 2022. Since then, it's produced approximately a hundred and eighteen million gallons, so. That was a good, good program, I think one of the key points there as far as getting that strategy taken care of. Number three, that is ongoing right now, that is the remote Ellenberger well field, so it's up in northeast Kerr County. Currently, it's, it's an exploratory phase, so we're continuing to monitor that. And again, that's a, a partnership with, uh, with Headwaters, so. How long have we, is that a couple of years or with, on that remote one?
So we've been working with them for, what was, it's a, actually, after they, um, drilled the Ellenberger well here, the idea was that for the for Headwaters to go out and look at different areas that might actually have Ellenberger water in it. And so they've gone out on their own, we're in a monitoring phase, we're, we're not truly partnered with them financially or, um, any of that. But they are going out looking, uh, their test, test well twenty now? Um, is, is the one they're drilling, and, uh, they've had some success out there locating the Ellenberger. And we're just trying to find it closer to the city that we may be able to plug into in the future and work with them. Get a well that's outside of the city limits, because as y'all can imagine, you know, all the wells inside the city limits pumping, you find someone else. Just to have a little different, um, pocket of water before, even if it's in the same water. They're still making progress with that. Last, uh, last third, they were out there still last week, uh, drilling and, and drilling and tapping and dancing and singing, so. We look forward to hear more about that.
I, I do, as we're there, let's, I wanna ask a question. The plan specifically says that the Ellenberger well does not perform as expected. The remote field needs some move, moved up. Is the Ellenberger well performing as expected?
So yes, if, um, the plan calls for how much they-
They thought it was going to produce, and we actually got pretty close to that, within, what we think's considerable, um, or decent
level of expectation from that well, so. We're, we'll talk a little bit more about other strategies that we can implement this afternoon or here in a little while. And other ways that we can do it. It's all about how much water, so, so how reliable is the water that you're going out, and how much is it gonna cost? And so that's what, that's what I'll be talking about a little bit more.
So you'll answer the question, the Ellenberger well is performing as expected?
It is performing as expected.
Good, so that-
Now, how long does that go through a drought? I can't answer.
But that does push back the need for the, the-
That's correct.
Field.
Yes, having that well was a significant help to our-
Remote well field. Although Headwaters is exploring it.
Yes. The, the remote well field has its limitations, like, like Mr. Stein was saying earlier. You gotta buy surface acres that could along with it, you gotta lease up the water, you gotta build a pipeline. So if we can find it here in, in the city limits, that's really truly the way to go.
Thank you, Stuart. All right, so strategy four, uh, as you discussed just moments ago, water right acquisitions and amendments. We reviewed three surface water rights that were brought to us. They were still too junior and just not, not beneficial during, during drought times. But we'll continue to evaluate other surface water rights and see what's available and, and see the, the feasibility and, and if it, if it benefits us. And this point, I will switch it over to Chris.
Chris?
So Chris Clark, our Assistant Director of Utilities, will give us a quick snapshot on these. So.
So the intention of these next slides is going to be telling y'all some of the limitations with this water.
What, how, even if the water is available, what we have to do to get that water and bring it back kind of with and make it reliable? So Chris is gonna give you a little update here.
So first, the sources of water. Um, as Zachary pointed out, we have the run of the river, stored surface water, A S R, aqua storage and recovery, groundwater, reuse water. Surface water limitations. As Zachary also pointed out, all surface waters owned by the state requires a permit to use it. So any additional permitting up and downstream also has to be amended. It's highly regulated during drought conditions, that's overseen by the state also with Water Master. And they pay attention to river flows. And then with our diversions on, on that also. It's governed by appropriation, first in time is first in right. The senior permits are superior to all junior permits out there. Every permit has restrictions on how it can be used as for diversions, river flows throughout the year. And currently, the river's over-appropriated and moving water rights up and downstream causes a reduction in pumpable, pumpable volume. The Water Master does that with an equation. And so if we take a permit downstream, move it upstream, we lose that volume. Groundwater limitations. All new wells require the permits. Conjunctive use of eighty thousand gallons per surface acre of land. Spacing and location is regulated by Headwaters to lessen the impact of neighboring wells. They essentially don't want these wells communicating with each other. In the aquifer, I'm sure y'all have heard, in this area is very slow to recharge. The rains we've seen or haven't seen in recent, um, they produce a, a bunch of surface water runoff or are slow to recharge the aquifer. And A S R aqua storage and recovery. The surface water is treated to drinking water standard, then injected into the aquifer. City of Kerrville currently has approximately nine hundred and eight million gallons stored to date. The injection began in nineteen ninety-three. So some of the limitations, we must have river water available to treat and inject into the aquifer. The river's not flowing during that time, we're not pulling it out and treating it. Injection of the water is limited to the winter months. Once again, that goes, you know, system demand is lower during those times, so we divert the water during those times and inject into the aquifer. And the water can migrate out of reach. So essentially, you know, as Zach had pointed out, you know, that is a concern. Once it's injected into the aquifer, can we get out, you know, X number of gallons we put back in?
But we get to take the water out, whether it moved or not.
Yes, you can, you, you get to take it back out, but you may be not getting the same molecule.
Same molecule.
Well, so they still get water.
No.
Reuse water, it's the most reliable source of water. When we have water, drinking water, we're always gonna have wastewater, so reuse water. You know, so it makes it a very reliable source. We currently have a ninety-two million gallon reservoir. With that reservoir, we supply multiple customers, such as the golf courses in town, the high school athletic fields, Troyer University, municipal sports complex, and various construction projects. And we do that through encouraging them to get water from the wastewater plant and, you know, water down roads for dust control and various purposes. And that water quality is monitored and regulated by T C Q, but it's very, very clean when we get done treating it.
I just ask a quick question. When we first did this pond, I thought it was ninety-five million, did that, was I wrong, or did we lose some millions somewhere?
We lost a little bit. I think it's actually at ninety-eight. There, there was a discrepancy there on, and, and I think we went, I think it, when we did the final math calculation. It may be the pump that's in the bottom and some of the, the head, the superstructure of the bottom of the pond that we lost. I mean, it doesn't take much on that size pond to, to lose a million.
I'll just start saying ninety-two now instead of ninety. I wanna be accurate.
Did that? I'll turn it over to Stuart Baron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In case y'all haven't heard enough from me, they say me who's why here again.
But those really are the, the, the five sources of water. I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll back to his slide, 'cause I, I want y'all to be able to ask any questions about any of those wa- those water sources. It's pretty, um, I can't see the clock from over, how much time do we have?
Five twenty-three.
About fifteen minutes or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're good.
Any questions about the different kinds of water that we have, or how reliable they are, or who regulates them, or how those regulations are, are, um, brought forward and what we, what are hurdles we gotta clear to get more water?
Oh, the Nimitz Lake stored water. Monitoring, uh, the, the silving up of the, of the bottom or losing capacity.
No, we don't monitor that, matter of fact, and we haven't done a study since the pond, or since the lake's been implemented. We've noticed over the years that, at least previous years, that the, the big floods wash about as much out of it as we get washed in. It's these little floods that actually bring more material in than what, than what's come out. So the last few years of us not having a big flood does impact the volume of the lake. But T C Q doesn't go back and re-permit that. You're permitted at, at eight hundred and twenty-two, twenty-three acre feet a year. That's what you're, that's how much water you can store in the lake, that's what it's permitted at, and you get that every January first, you get another eight hundred and twenty-four acre feet. If that's the volume of the lake or not, at least that's the way it's been as long as I've been here. Okay? Um, the, the groundwater one, I think Chris had some really good points on that. Kind of the, some of the limitations there, the spacing and the location. Really hard to get an, at seven hundred gallon minute well. You gotta have a lot of distance between you and the, and your city limits line or your neighbor in this particular scenario. And then also, you don't wanna impact the people around you, and so as you build the buffer around the city as to how, where you can put these wells and where, you know, where is the water and how close can they be spaced to one another? It's what we ran into on the Ellenberger well. You know, they start, they start playing off of each other. And so there's only so much room in the city that even if you have the water under there, how do you, how, how, how can you get it out past it?
The Ellenberger well is mixing, I mean, Ellenberger also into the Trinity, it goes, there's a bleed together there.
That's correct.
Cold depression.
Yeah, but it'd have to be between the two aquifers.
Yeah, the, the Ellenberger sits right under the Trinity, there's no confining layer, it, as, as, at least under the city. I keep looking, Chris, if, if, if y'all don't know, Chris Charles, he was, uh, Headwaters Board, Board, not Director, but a Chair? Not Chair?
Director.
Director, sorry, thank you, thanks for coming. Okay, so what are some strategies that we can look at moving forward here? Some of these are, are, um, just off the top of Stuart's head, other of them actually have been vetted out a little bit more, so we'll walk through. This is a, a kind of a quick horizon, what could we do in the next one to five, one to three years, I think I have on here, yeah? Walk through each one of these, y'all, somebody keep me on time, um, so I make sure I get to the next slide, too. Prohibit private, prohibit new water wells from being drilled in the city limits. Right now, if you are a private landowner and you wanna drill a well in the city limits, you can do that. You have to drill it to drinking water standards, and that's some monitoring and some concrete encasement go along with that, but you have the right to do that. Uh, we could change our ordinance to prohibit that. So people, normally, people aren't gonna do it, it's very, it's, there's a big cost with it. The lots are so small, you can't get the distance back from, um, the lot lines. However, it's something that we probably ought to consider in the future to say, hey, you know, if you're gonna be on our water system, we, we don't want you to have a, we don't want you to have a straw in our, in our aquifer as well. Number two, they require new subdivisions, um, subdivision, subdivided properties to gift their water rights to the city. Um, and this year, y'all will see a subdivision come to town that doesn't have water rights with it, it's eight hundred and forty acres, big. They don't have any groundwater rights, that was, they, they got taken out from under them, um, sometime after they were annexed and between now and then, so. Uh, we are obligated to ri- to serve them, they're in our C C N. I think that's important, I think that'd be a good, a good ordinance to, to put into place to say, hey, if you're going to develop, you're gonna bring eight hundred acres into our city, you gotta give us your water rights. Or you gotta give us your groundwater rights. Higher-tiered water straight, water rates. You know, that's, maybe you'll have, maybe we'll have some success with that or not. Higher tier, if you just raise the higher rate on the, or the, if you just raise the rate on the higher tier, the more volume they use. That's usually what we get cut out first. Soon as the drought comes online, we start limiting irrigation, say you gotta use less water, use less water. And so you actually gotta move the whole rate structure up to kind of, to have that impact that you're looking for. You can still make the higher high, uh, but you gotta have, if you're, if you're truly trying to conserve, it's gotta hurt a little bit. And that, that may or may not be, you know, something we wanna do, but that's, that's a not, something to consider. Landscaping ordinance to promote, um, drought-hardy plants. You know, no St. Augustine grass, there's a couple trees out there that, too, that take a ton of water. These are all options, just things to put out on the table, I, I, I imagine y'all take this slide with you and, and kind of think about it and talk about it and see if there's anything there that really vets out, you know, as you, as you consider that. Uh, this one is a new idea we had, um, matter of fact, when, uh, it's been about a year ago or so, we talked about zoning the hillsides with excessive grade, grade as green areas. It can't be developed. That is trying to get the density down. If you, if you look at some of these places, Kerrville's kind of built out in the riverbed, or the river valley. And we're starting to push out into the hills, right? And some of the hillsides are looking attractive to developers, and so they, some of them come and scrap all the trees off of them and try to build homes on them. If council says, hey, you know, we don't, we like the way our hill country looks. We don't want it flat and we like trees. So anything in excess of, whatever your number is, twenty percent, fifteen percent, fifteen's a little short, twenty's maybe a little high, somewhere in that range. We wanna zone that as a green space, we don't want developers to come out here and build in those areas, so. And it has to be more flat than that. That would cut- That would cut down on the density. Just, just thinking outside the box here, so. Um, there's some ideas for y'all to ponder. These are, these are getting a little further outside the box. Uh, this is, and, and the, and the planning horizon's a lot further. Most all of these are conservation strategies. They're not the new sources that we talked about. Conservation is probably the most easiest way to find water, right? It's not going to Canyon Lake. It's not going to these other sources of water that are maybe or maybe not reliable. During this time, we're proven up. There's a lot of stuff out there that's not reliable. Um, but conservation is the most reliable method. Aside from possibly reuse water that you already use, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Expand your reuse system. There it is, number one. Do we want a bigger reuse system? Do we want to make that into something that's potable, that we put it back into the, into the aquifer? Um, I don't know. Is it a bigger pond? Um, right now, it, um, when John was here a few minutes ago, he was actually, I think he was the, the chair of the committee. And Delain, you may remember that they, they talked about the reuse system did not pencil out. It did not pay for itself, uh, unless you used it for potable water. But as soon as you put a, a, a potable water component into that, the dollar amount, it works, because now you're, you're producing water that's invaluable. Because you can't, you can't get it from anywhere. So, expanding the reuse water system. Developing a reuse aquifer recharge system. Short story.
Five thirty-one.
Okay. Um, this one was, uh, this, I, I drink, I thought this one up standing in front of kitchen sink one morning pouring a gl- I'd have a glass of water by my bed at night, and I, I was standing there looking, I was like, why do I do this? Because I dump it out just about every morning, right, about half full. And at my house, I live in the country, I dumped it because I was like, well, I, I have a septic system here. And so even though we pumped it out of the well and it sat at my table overnight and I dumped it back in there, it's going back into the septic system, going back into the aquifer. And so I gave myself some comfort and said, hey, that's, that's a part of the cycle, right? But if you expand that onto the city as a whole, and you look, we dump it back into the river and, and tomorrow morning, it's down there in comfort somewhere. It's out of our reach. But is there an opportunity for us to kind of think of that same process, that same septic system process? Maybe not, maybe clean it, maybe clean it to drinking water standards, maybe not. Get it to the level of cleanliness that it is and put it in some of these open ponds that we have that leach back into the aquifer. Finish that last, that last straight, um, phase of treatment, and then make it back down into the aquifer without it, without discharging it back into the river. There again, happened at the kitchen sink. Don't know if it's beneficial to y'all, if that's something y'all want to think through more, but that, I think that's an opportunity. There, there's a, there's a potential there, at, at least in my mind. Um, build, uh, design and build a potable reuse water plant. This is actually what Zachary had been considering in the plan where we go back behind the reuse pond that exists right now. We build a potable water treatment plant, which is reverse osmosis. They are pretty expensive to, to manage and operate because they use a lot of electricity. Um, but that's, that's another option. And the last one, this was a very far field. This is what Headwaters actually does. Now, they require water availability study for new subdivisions. If the density is so high and you want super high density, we may require somebody to say, hey, show us how we can serve these people with the amount of groundwater you're bringing to us, so we're not getting any more density. We're not having any more, uh, undue impact on the aquifer. So those are some of the ideas that, that staff and I have thought up, um, of potential solutions. Most of that is all about, um, uh, conservation. We have, nobody's dreamt up a new idea where to get more water, because it, it's not there. I mean, we've looked under every stone. There, there, there is no more water, and, um, Ms. Seigerman was asking me earlier, you know, everybody wants me to come up here and pat them on the back and say, yes, we got enough water. You don't have to worry about it. It's, it's really not the case. You know, we, we're in, we live in a place where there's not a lot of water around here, and as long as we conserve it, we'll have enough. But that's not a problem, but, but there's things that we gotta do that, to, that, that prompts conservation.
Tell them what you tell me about the water compared to money.
So it's, uh, within the last years, so I've been com- comparing water to money. Um, it's like a bank account. If, if you're, if you're conscious with what you're spending, it's out, out of your home, your own personal bank account, because people can relate to that easier than, you know, how much water do we have? It's this obvi-, you know, this big number that nobody, they don't even know how to fathom it. Consider it your bank account at home. If you're gonna put, you've gotta put money in your bank account, you know how much is in there, you know how fast you can take it out, you know how long it's gonna last. But as soon as you take your eye off the ball, if you're not doing that with intention, and how am I gonna save, or how am I gonna spend, or when am I gonna spend? Then it just, it just runs out on you. We have to plan for water. We have to know how much is there, and we gotta know how long we need it for. And so that's, that's really the future of, of telling people how to manage their waters, very similar to managing their money.
Other questions for Mr. Barrett?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm comforted knowing your point. We're thinking about some options, and I like, I like a few of them, so.
So some of the strategies outlined in the long-range water plan. Additional conservation implementation year is ongoing. Additional Kerr County groundwater, the local Ellenberger well, was twenty twenty. It says water right amendments. Implementation year is twenty twenty-three. What are we doing on that?
Water right amendments, so some of those were, when we talked about Luis Hayes Park, moving it up there, that was one of them. We need to relocate that water right and amend it to where we can drink it, have it for drinking water standards, and we've, we've done that, done that already, yes, sir.
And upcoming in twenty thirty is water right acquisition.
Mm-hmm. That's those buying additional surface water rights, when y'all ask about that amount.
Are we working on that?
We've had three people contact us within the last year, and so-
Their rights were junior, correct? Is that what?
Their rights are more junior, yes, sir. That's right.
What I heard earlier? But the, the study did find some water rights that were senior.
More senior.
Are we talking to any of those people?
We haven't reached out to all of those people, no, sir, not, not at this time. We found most of the people that we reached out to are not interested in selling their water rights, and if they are, nobody really knows what they're worth. They think they're worth a gazillion dollars. Um, and, and, and we don't agree with that. Because of times like this, even as senior as they are, even if the state says, you know, if there's water in the river, you can pump it, there's gotta be water in the river. And what we're seeing right now is there's not water in the river, so it, it seems, as we stand here today, as much as I hate to say it, it seems to be fruitless to go after those water rights when we, currently, that, that water's just not in the river to pump.
Yet it's in the plan.
It is in the, oh, there's a bunch of strategies in the plan. Some of them are better than others, yes, sir.
Um, I appreciate everyone taking the time to talk about this, because I know people I run into talk about, ask me about it. Obviously, I don't have your experience, none of your experience. But I want to be able to give, look them in the eye and give them a, an honest answer. And the honest answer, I believe, is, uh, unless we, unless we work the plan, we're gonna have trouble. And we have a plan. Water right amendments, are we, are we working on any other water right amendments?
Not on, on, not on any water right amendments that we own right now. So the last time we bought, and, and Mr. Hayes may have to help me with this, the last time we bought water, if memory serves me, it was a, probably eight or ten years ago, we bought a, a water right in, in Center Point. We paid about forty grand for the water right. By the time we were done, we had about a hundred grand in it to get it up here, and it's, it's not reliable water. And so even though it's, even though we, we felt like, at that particular time, we were thinking about expanding our ASR system. We were thinking, and if we do that, then we gotta build a, a bigger treatment plant. It, it snowballs, and so, yes, that is the first piece. But as soon as you do that, then there's other components that kind of go in there after it, not to mention the regulations by TCQ. So to, the, the short answer to your question is no, sir, we haven't reached out to all of those water right owners, and, and we can do that. The, the problem with that is if some of them do want to sell, how is it really, how do we set that price and which one, what is the most reliable water that's actually gonna be available when we're needing it?
You can't drink water made of paper.
That's right.
There's an old saying that you dig a well before you're thirsty. Generally used to say you're nice to someone before you ask them for a favor, right? But in our cases, it's actually true. We need, we need to have reliable sources of water available before we're thirsty.
That's right.
And I know that y'all are running the system. I, I trust the way you're running the system, and I believe the system is, is not only well-run, but is forward-thinking. But when, when are we planning to update this plan? It's been, it's been four years, so.
So that's a hundred-year plan, and you can tell from the discussion today that no, not a whole lot has changed. I mean, it identified things that we had talked about in there for, ever since I've been here. No additional water is being found out there. Um, that plan still covers everything that we know of as being reliable water in the area, even all the way to Canyon Lake, Lake Amistad. It covers all those scenarios.
And we're gonna update the plan in a hundred years.
Excuse me?
We're gonna update the plan in a hundred years, then.
I think it makes sense to update the plan when your, when your, um, population, when you see a, a change in population, it either starts to increase on how fast you're growing.
Rate of growth.
Yes, sir. Something, something, some of that trigger, but if we can implement some of these strategies and keep, kind of keep our growth at that one and a half percent, I think the plan stays good for thirty years, fifty years? I'll put you on the spot. He gets paid to make these plans, by the way, so.
He's not being paid right now, so.
My, my advice on updating the plan is typically you want to do it like, like Stuart was talking about, if all of a sudden you see this rapid change in population growth. If you see one of your existing supplies that you thought was firm, maybe you have a surface water supply that you thought was firm, and all of a sudden a new drought comes along, and you're like, okay, this, this isn't as firm as we thought. We need to reevaluate this. And typically, you also want to do it when, kind of before you pull the trigger on that next big project, just to do your due diligence before you make that investment. Of, hey, before we put in this big remote wellfield, let's take one more look at stuff around. Let's take one more look at our reliability of, reliability of our existing supplies and our demands, to make sure that there's nothing else out there that we need to take a closer look at, and that we need this still, and just to do that due diligence is, is what I typically recommend.
Thank you. Any other questions for the group? Uh, I've learned a lot. I appreciate all of your being here tonight, and I hope our citizens have learned a lot. And I feel, I, like, uh, Councilmember Seigerman said, I feel a lot more comfortable with our situation after having read this, but also having more knowledgeable people than I explain it to, so I appreciate it very much. Any other from staff? All right, without any other business, I think we can go ahead and, uh, adjourn the, the workshop. So we are adjourned at five forty-two.